Call this public session to order. There is a quorum. That I'd like to identify closed topic sessions, recommended expulsions, public employee assignment, reassignment appointment, public appointment. I'm sorry, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel existing lit, anticipated litigation, public employee valuation superintendent. I don't think there's any public comment, so we will adjourn to closed session. I'd give to the board, Fabi Tattersfield from Visalia Charter Independent Study. Adam Avalos will serve as Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of the meeting room. And now this announcement will be shared in Spanish.
Armávalo servirá como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español. Elir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
Thank you. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording may be webcast. Recording our webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Any member of the public wanting to provide public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda, please fill out the public comment form, the green form located on the table at the back of the room. Please hand the completed form to Dela Smart, board manager, before the item comes up on the agenda. Please complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Ms. Smart is sitting at the table in the back of the room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. Would you please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I would like to report action taken in closed session on a on a motion by Board Member Odo and a second by Board Member K. Spear Saleno with a seven seven to zero vote. We would like to appoint Luis Espinoza as Administrator of Transportation, Director, sorry, Director of Transpiration. Luis Espinoza has served as Administrator of Transportation and Operations to Tulare City School District for the last five years. Prior to his employment with Tulare County, Tulare City School District, Mr. Espinoza served Kern County Superintendent of Schools as Bus Driver Instruction Instructor Number Two for a year and Delano Union School District as a school bus driver instructor for three years. Mr. Espinoza also served as a driver at Delano Association for the Developmentally Disabled Adults for six years. Mr. Espinoza holds a Department of Education Office of School Transportation School Bus Driver Instructor Certificate and a Transportation Administrator Course Certificate. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Mr. Espinoza. The revisions for tonight's board meeting are enclosures number one, eight, 10, and 11. And now we will have Mr. Thompson.
All right. Good evening, Board President. This is Gomoyen, Superintendent Schrum, Board members, and community and staff. It's always fun. I get the best part of the night. I get pleased to welcome our actors and singers from the LD Amonte High School Musical Production of Grease. The show opens this week, January 12th through the 14th at our LJ Williams Theater at 7:30 PM with a matinee performance at 2:00 PM on January 14th. Tonight, we have two selections that they'll be singing for us, which is Freddie My Love and Mooning. Special thanks to Drama Director Nicole McVoy and Music Director Justin Witt for their work in preparing the students for the opening of our district's first musical production for 2023. Much to just give a hand to our LD Amonte team. Here we go.
Hi, I'm Kari Henderson.
And I'm Vincent Navarro.
Well, I guess I'll explain a little bit of our characters. I play Jan and Vincent plays my love interest Roger. I'm one of the pink ladies in the show and Roger is one of the greasers. Yeah, which like our groups in the show. That's not the beginning.
It's not the beginning. I'll just go.
All over who?
Oh, I'm so full of love as any fool can see. Cause angels up above have hung a moon on me. I'll stand behind.
You'll stand behind.
You're moving forevermore.
Forevermore.
Someday you'll find.
Someday I'll find.
Me moving at your front door.
At my front door.
Oh, every day at school I want you always will until I got you. Moving to who? There's a moon out tonight.
Freddie, my love, I miss you more than words can say. Freddie, my love, please keep in touch while you're away. Hearing from you can make the day so much better. Getting a souvenir or maybe a letter. I really flipped over the gray cashmere sweater, Freddie, my love. Freddie, my love. Freddie, my love. Freddie, my love. Don't keep your letters from me. I thrill to every line. Your spelling's kinda crummy, but honey's always mine. I treasure every gifty. The ring is really nifty. You say it cost you fifty, so you're thrifty. I don't mind. Freddie, you'll see, you'll have me in your arms someday. Freddie, my love. And I'll be holding my bridal bouquet. Freddie, I'm yours. Thinking about it, my heart's pounding already. Knowing when you come home, we'll start going steady. And do your service play around like I'm Freddie. Freddie, my love. 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 Freddie, my love.
Again, the show is later on this week, so definitely check it out. Thank you, you guys.
Spotlight on good things happening in the district, Superintendent Schrum.
Well, good evening, Board President Gomoyen, Board members and team. One of the great pieces of the spotlight is, of course, we get to start every board meeting now with a spotlight from our VAPA team and department. So again, thank you to Dan and the team and the group at LD Amonte. Looking forward to seeing that. What a great job in all of our spring musicals. I got here last spring, missed most of that, so I'm excited this year about being here and being able to go to those shows. And of course, you know, our spring sports and other things that are happening right now. So as we turn to the spotlight, want to begin, of course, with our beliefs and commitments and priorities. Again, the work of our board to set the focus, set the foundation, which we see exemplified in our core beliefs and commitments. Pretty brief this evening because, of course, as everybody knows, we have been on winter break. And so very exciting on Monday as district team members throughout welcomed our students back. And even though it was raining, that didn't dampen our excitement to see our kids, students, teachers, and staff. We were all out there along with members of our board to welcome everybody back. So starting on the spotlight before we went out for the break, several of the board and myself had a great opportunity to visit Visalia Adult School and their kind of graduation ceremonies that they have. This semester, we had about 1,800 students enrolled at the adult school. What a phenomenal number of young adults. 266 were enrolled in English as a Second Language Program. We have about 385 enrolled in the high school diploma program. And at the December ceremony, there are 42 completed and received their diploma. 281 are enrolled in the high school equivalency program and 19 received that at that ceremony. We have adult transition program there and over 493 of the students there have completed a career technical education program. Want to thank Tammy Olson, her amazing staff for just in those teachers, like as the nurse, as the nursing students and others came across the stage to either get a certificate or get their PIN. It's just very uplifting. The stories that they share just really speaks to the importance of the work that she does and her team. And you'll not not find any more dedicated and passionate teachers than those at the adult school. So shout out to them and and thanks for inviting us to be part of that great event. Moving on, of course, while we were off, that doesn't mean that Visalia Unified was completely closed down in a sense, right? There were tournaments, sports events, practices, VAPA practice, all those sorts of things continued during the break. And so a couple of tournaments, spotlight for our Redwood Boys Basketball, second place at the 20, at the 71st. Poly Wilson Tournament and the LD Amonte Boys placed third. So great job to those students. Hopefully they got a little bit of a break in there somewhere. But speaking of something we're very proud of, want to give a huge shout out to Andy DeMayo, Michelle Reed and her team. And that is our ELOP team putting together for the first time winner intercession opportunities. And in addition to academic recovery for some of our high school students to complete credits, we also had for our elementary and I think it went through sixth grade, yes, winter intercession. Starting on December 19th, we had over 1,000 students register to attend these events held at different sites. As I said, we had Edgenuity, which is credit recovery happening at our VCIS West Campus. Both of these programs ran for about 12 days. The only days they had off really were Christmas Eve Day and New Year's Eve and Day. And here are some pictures from our elementary session. You can see, you know, what was unique about this is it wasn't just a traditional sit down and do work. It was engaging. It was hands on. It was partnerships with Arts Visalia, Aliva, which is a group we're working with to do sports. Board President Gomoyen and I had an opportunity to visit one of the sites and it was one of the foggy days that I had heard about and finally got to see. And, you know, that staff was prepared, right? They were easily ready to transition from an outdoor to an indoor activity. Whatever had to happen, they made it happen. It was just so exciting to see these kids. A program called Quest, which is where kids have to solve problems, so higher level thinking. Also, huge shout out to our pro youth team. Again, ELOP, Michelle and Jeff, Marie with Pro Youth, Transportation, Nutrition, Custodial and Facilities. While many of us were taking days off or maybe we're at home or just relaxing, those folks were at work, right? Supporting our kids. And so I just, I just thank them so much. I ran into stories like even on the first day there, a parent coming back, she had just picked up her kid and he made her bring him back because he wanted to finish out the day there. He wasn't ready to go home. He was having so much fun in the program. And so I think it just huge shout out to our teachers and staff that supported that. Also want to recognize, and you see a picture there, many of our district team. And again, while, you know, people, it was still technically vacation, we had teachers. We had district staff that raised their hand and said, you know, I want to keep learning. I want to keep developing myself. And so we had several things happening. Cabinet Directors, our VUTA President, spent time together to learn about professional learning communities, how we want to make sure we get it right in Visalia Unified, making sure we're not just doing something in name only, but doing something that really done the right way can empower teachers to have control over the learning of what happens for students in their classroom. But being able to do that means we have to retrain, we have to relearn, we have to make sure we're doing it the right way. And we have to do it in a collaborative way, right? So that together we have agreements. And so certainly appreciate those. It was two foot, very full days. Thank you to Mark and Andy for helping pull that together and of course, our partners as well. And our teachers, it wasn't just the district folks learning. We had a training right in this very room for some of our elementary teachers with math. I know there was other training across the district with instructional strategies. And we had math foundational skills work going on. 17 teachers dedicated time during the break to learn how to improve building math foundations. Thanks to the teaching learning team, Brianne, Lori, and the Toses for putting that together. And like I said, we had Keenan Training, which is helping, helping teachers learn how to manage classrooms and other things. We had hundreds of teachers over the break continue their professional learning. I think that speaks a lot to the caliber of teachers and professionals that we have in Visalia Unified. And if you haven't been to the website, I encourage you to go to the website. We heard very loud and clear in our community engagement sessions this spring and summer that resulted in the development of our communications team led by Andre Pacina and others. But hey, we need to do a better job at telling our story, getting information out there and making it accessible to people. Now, this work has only begun. So you're kind of seeing some minor facelift items right now. We have a huge overhaul coming in July. But already you're going to be able to, if you go to the website, see just a tease and a bit of that of our attempt to reorganize information, make it clearer, make it where if I have a question in the community about a bus or I have a question in the community about, maybe I have a problem, what do I do? All of those are things we want to make sure are clear so that a parent can go to a one stop shop. They can go to the website and then get everything they need or get linked to everything they need. So more work to come, but just want to acknowledge the great work that team has already put into working to make this a little bit more of a welcoming website. And so that's a little bit of the update that we have so far. We'll have some other things that we'll talk about in our reports on the spotlight. But again, just want to thank everyone who put in time over the winter break to continue learning or to continue to support our kids so that they had a safe and fun and educational place to go over the winter break versus maybe at home on a video game or something. And so although I'm sure that was fun too, but we appreciate everybody that pitched in and helped out with that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. There's no public comment. Any board comment or questions?
Just one comment. If they were on a video game, though, a few of our esports players at LD Amonte are actually ranked top in our state. So kudos to those folks. I gotta check them out before the break.
President Gomoyen, I think a member of the audience perhaps didn't put a comment card in for public comment.
Okay. Okay, we're not on.
There's a way that you're supposed to do this and this is the second time that I've come and I have to start Fresno State next week, so I really don't have any more time to come back. So I would appreciate a little bit of your time and your attention. My daughter attends Mount Whitney High School and the gentleman just finished speaking about parents going to a one stop place. This should be that place. There's a issue with the busing system that I've been trying to get attention to Mount Whitney's principal. Apparently it's acceptable for the students to walk three miles to school and three miles back. That's an equivalent of six miles. And the last past two days, it's been raining and my daughter is one of those students. I don't know which one of you on this board had to walk six miles to attain an education. I don't think it's right, nor do I think it's fair for that to be okay. If we're only allowed to test these students to walk a mile, how is it that they are expected to walk three miles to school and three miles home? I don't understand it ethically or morally. I don't know which one of you on this board has done that, but personally I have. I had to do that because I had a single mom and I am a single mom. So I would like to bring that to your attention. I don't know who made that rule. I don't know which one of you on this board thinks that it's okay. And as a parent, as a parent advocate, I would like you to hear me out. There's a few other things that I would like to say, but I know that there's a card, but that is what I'd like to bring to your attention. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, so we're on general public comment. General public comment on any school related topic will be heard at this time. The board asks that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at that time. The item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act, California's Open Public Meeting Law, board discussion is limited to the item on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and understanding of the board's responsibility. Pursuant board policy, the board may limit individual comments to more than three, no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comment by stating your name. And it doesn't seem we have any other public comment. Item six consent agenda. Would any item like to pull, would any board member like to pull any consent agenda item? I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Board Member K. Spear Saleno and second by Board Member Viegas. All in favor?
Motion passes unanimously with the student rep voting yes.
Agenda item number seven, Student Board Representative, Ms. Fabi Tattersfeld.
Hello, board. LD Amonte High School will present Grease at the LJ Williams Theater, January 12th through 14th. Saw a little snippet. I'm sure it'll be wonderful. LD Amonte High School will resume holding minor senate meetings on January 17th as part of our commitment to our student representation. LD Amonte Spirit Club will host tailgate events for both basketball and soccer this month. Golden West High School ASB is very excited to be back on campus after a well deserved break and is currently working on implementing new systems to ensure more students feel welcome and involved on campus. Golden West Winter Drumline Drama Program and Winter Guard Groups are hard at work in preparation for various shows and performances happening in the coming months. In light of Valentine's Day, Golden West is working on creating a kindness week in which all students can come together for various activities and share what makes them happy in order to promote more friendship on campus. Golden West's student leaders are preparing to recognize all of the incredible work of our winter sports in the upcoming winter sports rally. Mount Whitney High School's JV Girl Soccer played first in the Silver Division. Mount Whitney Wrestling Team placed fifth at the Redwood Invitational. Mount Whitney hosted another successful annual Poly Wilhelmson Tournament. Mount Whitney's Link Crew Students and ASB Leaders will participate in the Tulare County Office of Education's Anti-Bullying Symposium Event, January 19th. Redwood High School's Boys Basketball took second place in this year's Annie Poly Wilhelmson Tournament. Redwood Boys Wrestling placed third at the Redwood Invitational over the break. Isaac Mendoza got second place. Gunner Benedict got sixth place. Brody Prezendorf, sixth place. Eli Valdez, fourth place. Kai Prezendorf, second place. Devin Calderon, clarinet. Raul Arrendono, bass clarinet. Jalen Bullock, tuba. Grace Buckley, percussion. And Wu percussion. Jaden Bullock, bass trombone will present Redwood at the 2023 California Music Educators All-State Conference this year. These students auditioned against 1,000s of students to earn spots. VCIS wants to congratulate the 25 seniors who graduated early with us this fall. Many of them are starting full time with COS and other trade schools this spring. And many are also beginning, beginning to work full time. They will join us for our commencement ceremony in June. VCIS staff kicked off the spring semester with a professional development day yesterday, learning about mathematical mindsets and how staff's perceptions of math can support our VCIS students, having a positive outlook on mathematics in high school. All staff participated, including all classified staff members. The VCIS ASB will continue to offer many opportunities for our students to get involved on campus and in the community. These include Kindness Week in February, lunchtime activities, and getting involved in community service projects such as Miracle League. VCIS will be kicking off in-person CASP sessions to prepare students for the math portion of the CASP test. VCIS will also offer support labs for students taking COS concurrent classes in sewing, fashion design, and other areas of home economics. VTEC is hosting a parent meet and greet on Thursday, January 12th, 2023, in Room Four, starting at five to welcome and meet the new principal, Mr. Braun. VTEC will be visiting feeder schools to promote their school at the beginning of the week on January 23rd, 2023. VTEC FFA is preparing for a movie night next week on Tuesday to kick off the new year. Then I have Sequoia, one moment. Sequoia finished out the quarter with another 50 plus students meeting graduation status. Last day of the quarter, ASB treated students to free pizza and chips for their hard work in academics. Sequoia was pleased to have Noel G., a motivational speaker and actor, come to our campus and present to a full student body assembly, then head to the COS campus to speak to our district SSIP students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Agenda item number eight, Board Member Reports. Let's start with Board Member Belt.
Excellent. Thank you. President Gomoyen, this will be fun. Keep saying President Gomoyen. We enjoyed so many of the things at the adult school in the very last week of the regular session. I attended the Partner Appreciation Lunch, in which the adult school has so many community partners, both in corporations as well as medical field and others that. the adult school has so many community partners, both in corporations as well as medical field and others, that they appreciated being appreciated. It was a full room, a full house. And once again, you know, the things that Tammy Olson is doing there and seeing the value that each one of those students, I know that it's a little bit expanded of what we normally look at with our younger students. But then to attend a couple nights later than the graduation, that's what really makes it full circle. You see these adults who have come back to finish school, and they're all ages. I think there was one that we saw, Mr. Shrum, that was pretty close to 50-something and was just as excited as an 18-year-old walking across the stage to get his high school diploma. That was, that was amazing to watch. We, I also attended a, the intercession visit with Superintendent Shrum with, at Manuel Hernandez. And again, to see the work that we really enjoy with pro-youth, that, the partnership we have with them. And of course, the Level Group was there as well. And those kids were mostly very excited about being there. There was one little girl who wasn't too sure she wanted to go back to school, and she had to have a little coaching from her dad, but once she got in and excited about the art stuff they were doing, as well as the expanded learning that they were able to enjoy and elaborate, I hope. My hope is that they actually had more filling the gap that we've been trying to do. And so to see a thousand students be able to do that over the Christmas winter break was pretty amazing. Yesterday, I found out that the shoes I was wearing were not waterproof as I went to assist both Principal Schelling at Golden Oak and then Jose Franco at Valley Oak, welcoming students back. It was really fun to be a part of that, saying, hey, welcome back. Are you ready? And like I said, I found out that my shoes aren't waterproof and had to go home and change my shoes and socks before I could go to my next appointment. But I appreciate the motivation that Superintendent Shrum, you've given us to engage, again, the word we keep using, connect with our students. And that's another small way of saying, you know, you were missed, and you're welcome, and let's get going. And it was really wonderful to see that yesterday.
Thank you. Dr. Viegas.
Thank you, President Gamoyen. I'll keep it short and sweet. I just want to also express my appreciation for all our folks who've been working throughout the winter break, taking time, you know, to spend with their families, but also taking that time to share with students to continue growing those bonds and those connections. It's truly meaningful going into this next semester. I know students are excited. I know families are excited. Just the one thing that I would want to emphasize is drive safe. We know these are rainy conditions. Give yourself, you know, just a few extra minutes, whether it's picking your child up or dropping them off at school. Be aware of your surroundings and students, you know, also be aware of our surroundings. I know even myself, I can be tempted to throw on some headphones and kind of, you know, pretend I'm the main character in a movie, but we've got to maintain awareness of our surroundings. And so just really encourage everybody to drive safe. You know, both to and from school. And yeah, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member K. Spears Saleno.
Yeah, so I visited Aviva Blunt with Superintendent Shrum. Also, I think a lot of us went to the graduation for the adult school for their nursing program, which was wonderful. Had a great winter break, and I am looking forward to our visits and, and this spring and what it brings. So thank you, everyone, and hope you had a good break.
Thank you. Dr. Odo.
So Mr. Belt's already mentioned, and Ms. Saleno mentioned the adult school LVN Penning, which was a wonderful event, and also the mid-year graduation and program completers event. The adult school, I oversaw the adult school for a couple of years, and one of the things that struck me there was that when adults, just like kids, get close to meeting a goal, the excitement level, the intensity level, and the motivation to finish just goes right to the roof. So it's great to see folks as adults who make it to high school diploma when they didn't get that chance as kids to have that experience and to have it leverage them into, project them into whatever futures they've planned for themselves. So kudos to them for making that work. Kudos to the staff for bringing them through. That's a great staff out there. And kudos also to Visalia Unified, because there was a time during the Great Recession when adult school funding got cut and districts let adult schools go away. And in this district, we maintained the adult school, knowing that it was good for the community, a community that has struggled with helping folks become educated, to help them become degreed, programmed, you know, whatever, certified when they wanted to, because they were able to at whatever point in life. So the adult school is an important program, and it's incredible as well that the fact that we maintained the adult school meant that Visalia Unified led the way on the SAC, the Sequoia Adult Education Consortium, I think it's called. And we're taking a leading position in that and have for a couple of years, further underscoring the fact that adult education matters. And it's important that this board support that. It's good for kids and good for the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Neeler.
I'd just like to welcome back all of our staff. I hope you had a great holiday season, and I just want to thank you and just make sure that we give the kudos to your dedication and support. You know, we had a first semester, we're done with that, and we hit the ground running for the second semester. Just appreciate all your hard work that you do every day just so effortlessly sometimes, you know, with our students. Also, great job. I don't know if they're still here, but for the LD Amonte students, very talented. I can't wait to see Grease. And that's my report.
Thank you. Board Member Gaby.
Yeah, I'd like to, I mean, first of all, ditto everything Dr. Odo said about the adult school. It's such a fabulous program. The only little thing I would add to that is often those adults mentioned they were role models to their kids, too. And for a kid to see a parent going back to school, there's just, you know, there's, does more than words can say when you really model that. So yeah, aside from that, welcome back. And teachers had to come back to a rainy day schedule, so bless you. I mean, kids are a little squirrely on a rainy day, and so thank you for coming back today, too. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to go to the social emotional learning barbecue that Golden Oak does quarterly, and I want to thank Grace Community Church, who puts on that little barbecue. I was able to visit some intercession things. I was at Crestwood with Superintendent Shrum, a couple of the kids, the, the people that do the sports, the elbow, alivo. Yeah, a couple of the kids are like, it's too cold. We want to, we don't want to go out there, but they, they had a good time. And then, I mean, it was just like clockwork. They shift to Arts Visalia, and they were coming in and showing us their little snowflakes. And and then I was quite interested in the Quest Pro-Solve, so Ms. Pinto invited me to Manuel Hernandez, and I actually watched Michelle Reed teach that. I was quite impressed with it, and Michelle, you're a fantastic teacher. So it was quite, the kids really think, the kids had to collaborate. And I, I just want to get kids to school, so anything that would get them excited to come, I am all for that, and they were excited to be there. So that, that was really fun to watch. I welcome back on our rainy Monday day, kids back to school. I taught high school, so it's kind of fun to watch little kids, these little TK kids come in and just kind of like, it was so cute, like they start to walk in the cafeteria. Then they run back and hug their moms and dads, and you know, the looks on the parents' faces, and I just want to say thank you for trusting your kids to us. It's a big responsibility for me. When I saw that, I thought, wow, I have a big responsibility to take care of these children and make sure they're educated. So that was really fun. I also during, I forgot, I also got invited to VCIS for the intercession for the credit recovery, and that was really good, too. There were lots of kids there. I almost wanted to go and get them a box of Starbucks, because it was kind of hard for them to stay up, but I thought, I don't think I should drug them. But anyway, the thing that was really fun for me is the one, I don't know if you're going to talk about the one Visalia connected. Yeah, so I was able to go to, there was all the roundtables that met since the beginning of the school year were all together. It's, it's becoming a reality. It's starting to get skin on the bones. There is a task force forum now, and each group was able to come together and talk about, you know, what, what is their mission statement? What is it they want to do for our kids? And so I'm really excited about that for our kids. And we talked a lot about the, you know, the kids that had their screens off during the pandemic when we were teaching on Zoom. Those are the kids we want to reach. We want kids to feel like they belong and they belong to this school and that they have meaningful connections. And I believe that they will, in my heart, that these, these kids will start excelling academically. So I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Shrum.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam President and Board Members. Again, welcome back. Everyone had an opportunity at Annie R. Mitchell to welcome our kids back and teachers and staff and made it around the, not every room, but a lot of the rooms, and just to see the excitement and teachers getting right back into the swing of things. We don't have a minute to waste or a minute to spare here in Visalia on the work that we do. So thank you to our teacher staff. And you know, all our facilities crew especially, they had a lot of work over the holiday, continuing to do a lot of work. You know, with, with the rain that we're having, which is a great thing, but also causes some things that we have to work on, leaks and other things. And shout out to Eric and his maintenance and facilities team that are on it. And, you know, also to echo what other board members have said, we certainly want everyone to be cautious and careful, but we are open. Take extra time in the morning, meaning leave earlier versus not later to get to school, right? Because we, we need you there. We need, attendance is important, and attendance matters. Want to welcome our student board member. She is, is, I have an advisory, as many of you know, where I meet with groups of students. She's an active member of that advisory as all of our student board member reps have been, and their voice is so critical in helping us know what's happening out there. And I tell them all the time, they, they, they don't hold anything back. So you don't have to worry about them not saying something because I'm the superintendent. Trust me, they're, they're, they're speaking to me. So I appreciate it. Also want to say thank you to our community. We have launched the One Visalia Connected Initiative. Our goal is to connect every kid to a meaningful activity. We know that if we do that through sports, through VAPA, through internships, through mentorships, through community partnerships, community YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, Police Athletically, you name it. We want every kid to be connected. And so we've started on that journey led by our board, setting forth our, you know, beliefs and commitments about as a district, we must provide pathways of connectivity for our families and community to our school system. That's one of my favorite pieces of the beliefs and commitments. And we're putting that into the reality. So despite the weather, we had over 70 community members and district members there today for two hours. They devoted two hours out of their time. These are people that, you know, the fire chief, the, you know, our police captain lieutenant, like, these are people who have extremely important busy jobs, but yet they took the time to come because it's important. These are not just Visalia Unified students. These are the students and, and kids that belong to the community. And so when we think about the challenges and things that we have to do, we cannot, as a school system, do it alone. We have to be part of a community. And so our community truly has, has stepped forward and said, we're willing to be part of that. And so more to come on that. Also want to let everyone know it's going to be a busy semester, so get ready. If you're a parent, if you're a community member, teacher, student, watching this presentation, which I'm sure you're at home watching this, or the recorded version, we're launching a strategic plan. We're launching a long-range facility plan. We are going to, in a short period of time, kick off series of community meetings, town hall conversations, faculty meetings, student advisories. We're going to be coming to you, and we're going to need your feedback because we're going to build a plan that's going to guide our system for the years to come. That's going to be clear and transparent and attached to that plan, or here are initiatives. Here are the tactics that we're going to, to build to meet that initiative goal. Here's the budget that's aligned to that, right? So we know five years from now how much money we need. We know four years from now. We know when we're going to start that club. We know when we're going to start that class. All that comes through a strategic plan. So when we reach out to you, we're going to come to you. Yes, we'll have stuff here, but we're going to come to communities. We're going to come to houses. We're going to come to places of worship. We're going to come wherever people are, because this has to be a community-inspired strategic plan and long-range facility plan. So get ready, we're going to be needing you to step forward and make sure your voice is heard as we do these projects and planning projects this spring. So other than that, I think that's everything I wanted to say. I will just give a quick reminder that this board has prioritized safety. And so as part of that, we are having a series of early release days by cluster. So every cluster has an early release day, an additional early release day that this board approved, so that we have a day dedicated where our staff is going to receive intense safety training. This is so important. We can't wait to do this. And so I appreciate this board placing priority on this. And so I believe those start week after next. But your schools and the district have communicated those dates to you. Also, just want to say thank you, parents. Thank you, students, for understanding why we needed to add an early release day in our calendar in January and why that was so important. So thank you for doing that. Thank you to our CSEA, the UTA partners, for all of us working together to make this, this day a reality for our staff. So thank you for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Agenda item 10.1, Recommended Expulsions. Have a motion.
Move to approve?
I second.
A motion from Dr. Odo, second from Board Member. Oh, sorry. Motion by Board Member Belt, second by Dr. Odo.
Reverse, but okay.
Did I get it? Okay. Somebody made a motion, okay? Let's vote.
Student Board Member abstains and vote passes 6-0 with one absent.
Agenda item 11.1, Warrant List.
Good evening, President Gamoyen, members of the board, Superintendent Shrum. This is our routine agenda item for approving our warrant list for warrants from December 1st through December 16th of 2022.
A motion to approve?
Second.
On a motion from Board Member Gaby, second by Board Member Neeler. Vote.
Vote passes. Student Board Representative votes yes. Vote passes 5, 5-0 with two, one abstention and one absent.
Okay, I'm going to close the regular session, and I'm going to open this public session on Visalia Financing Cooperation Meeting. So Mr. Hernandez, Board Agenda Item 12.1, Annual Meeting and Selection of Officers for Visalia Financing Corporation. Mr. Hernandez.
Got it. Thank you, board. Again, as a reminder, or maybe this might be the first time you've realized that the board also serves as the board of the Visalia Financing Corporation. So again, along with our core beliefs and commitments, this kind of goes along with providing safe and supportive learning environments, because the Visalia Financing Corporation, which was formed in May of 1999, is a nonprofit public benefit corporation that was formed to assist the district with different types of financing activities. So one of the ways that the corporation provides financing assistance is by acquiring or constructing facilities, land, equipment, or by issuing debt to, to do those things. So again, it was formed in 1989 and 1990, the corporation issued the certificates of participation for for some projects, and we'll go through what some of those projects were. Again, in 2015, did another issuance of COP included Sequoia High School, as well as the Oaks Building Purchase. And then in 2018, issued a COP to assist with some Measure E projects, as well as some other projects that we're waiting for state funding. So outstanding debt as of, as of today, on the 2015 COP is 13.5 million. We receive property tax pass-through revenues that pay for that debt, so there's no state funding, general fund commitment to that. Two thousand eighteen COP, most of that has been repaid on schedule, eighteen point four million outstanding. Again, a, a large repayment was made in twenty twenty-one. We have some cash set aside from state reimbursements that have come through and we'll talk more about this COP next, next month and as we go through our long-range facilities master plan on our, our proposal to repay that debt in the future. Again, some of the projects that were completed with this funding, you see purchase of parcels for L Diamante, so that, you know, that was a long time ago. Again, that has been repaid. Purchase of this building actually in, in nineteen ninety-six, I think, with some of those funds. Oaks Building, Sequoia, some battery projects. Those battery projects provide savings to the general fund. And then again, two thousand eighteen, some major projects that were completed that were part of Measure E as well as Denton and then the remainder of the Sequoia High School project. So we do an annual report, but also we do a selection of officers. So we recommend that the board president and board clerk serve in the same general capacity on the Visalia Financing Corporation. Those officers are president, vice president, and secretary treasurer, which vice president and secretary treasurer can be the same person. So the recommendation is for president to be Walter Gamoyen and vice president, secretary treasurer, Ms. Gaby. So that is the recommendation. This is an action item for the board.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Board Member Neeler, second by Casebeers Saleno. Favor.
Motion carries. Oh, sorry, that's you. Motion carries. Student Board Representative votes yes and motion carries unanimously.
I promise I'll get this down. The Visalia Finance Corporation meeting is now adjourned. I will reconvene the regular board session and I'm going to adjourn the regular board session. Thank you very much.